We need to turn this on. Peter, do we need to turn this on?
Hi, my name is Tony Farber. I am from California. We started off at both Ms. and Mrs. San Diego County, and we moved on to these titles now. We're here today with Mayor, who's presenting us with the proclamation of World Spay Day. So it's going to be the last Tuesday of February. It's going to be World Spay Day. Spaying and neutering is very dear to my heart. I'm very passionate about this because it's still estimated about 1.5 million animals are being euthanized in the shelters in the United States. So spaying and neutering helps bring those numbers down and prevent overpopulation. Not only does it prevent overpopulation, but it also prevents certain types of cancers and certain types of behavioral issues. We're very fortunate at the San Diego Humane Society. We have a program called Getting It Down to Zero. And in July 2015, we were able to get the number down to zero. So any animal that is treatable or a healthy animal brought into the San Diego Humane Society will be safe. Other counties, I can't say that. So we really want to focus on the spaying and neutering and keeping that number down to zero here. I want to thank Mayor for what he did for us. Thank you so much. So we also have a bunny that we have up for adoption right now. Flurry. Flurry is her name. So if anybody wants to adopt a bunny, just come down to our Oceanside campus and come and check her out. She's a little baby, so she's got a little bit of growing in her. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mullin?
Do you want to do roll call?
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
And Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. The council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss item one on the closed session agenda, conference with labor negotiator with respect to the negotiations involving the management employees of the City of Oceanside and the Oceanside Police Officers Association. The council did meet and give direction on both items, but there's no action to report at this time under the Brown Act.
Do our consent counter items? Is there any?
None of the items have been pulled. Please.
Then I'll move approval of the consent counter items?
I'll second that, but I will be recusing myself and let the record reflect that I'm recusing myself on item number seven.
Please vote.
Councilmember Rud. There you go. Motion passes 5-0.
We've got an item 13, which is approval of the draft master plan for the arts.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Sherry Cosby, Library Director. The Library Department is here tonight to present the final draft of O-Arts, Oceanside's Master Plan for the Arts. We're very excited to be at this point in the process. It's been an amazing experience, and we've received an incredible amount of support from our community. I'd like to introduce and acknowledge the work of our consultant, David Platner Sanders, from the Cultural Planning Group. Thank you, David. The work of the Arts Commission needs to be acknowledged as well. And Arts Commission Chair Rebecca Pierce Goodman is here tonight along with other commissioners. Thank you. The Library Department supplies staff support to the Arts Commission, and we've been working in the last couple of years to increase that support. And Library Division Manager CJ Demento has worked closely with David and the Arts Commission and the community on this master plan, and I've asked her to make the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, CJ Demento, Library Division Manager, O-Arts Master Plan for the Arts. In 2016, we started the process of arts planning with the Library Department overseeing the Arts Commission and hosting a public forum on the arts, followed by the development of an RFP for master planning services. In 2017, Cultural Planning Group was selected as the consultant, and the formal planning process began with meetings with city officials, city departments, as well as key stakeholders. Public outreach began throughout the city in 2017 as well. Community interaction and engagement continued through 2018, and a draft plan was developed and presented at a public town hall and available online for input. The Arts Commission unanimously approved recommending the adoption of the plan by the City Council, and that leads us to today. This is the very first cultural plan for the City of Oceanside. Seventeen steering committee members were selected from arts and culture organizations and community groups. A total of over 300 people participated in the process of this plan. Four main goals were identified through 19 months of a planning process on this 10-year plan. Community engagement was ongoing and done throughout the community with the use of your library's bookmobiles. Input was received throughout schools, senior centers, resource centers, League of Women Voters meetings, libraries, and town halls. So what has our planning included, and what is Oceanside's arts and culture? One thing that we heard throughout the planning process is that Oceanside very much values its unique and authentic culture and want to see it preserved and promoted. These are snapshots of the rich cultural life, only some of the organization's venues, events, and people that contribute to Oceanside's unique and desirable quality of life. Oceanside is beginning a new chapter in its arts, but the city began its role in the early '90s with the adoption of the first public art policy. Oceanside is one of about 4,500 U.S. cities that promote the arts through their arts commissions or arts councils. The great majority of these cities have developed arts master plans, just like the one that you have before you today. So the four major goals of O-Arts are to support Oceanside's economic development through arts and culture, to enhance Oceanside's cityscape through creative placemaking, to improve Oceanside as a place for artists and creatives to thrive and contribute to our community, and to enhance arts governance within city government. The library's strategic plan identifies implementation of the master plan for the arts as an important element of their goal to connect through culture, community, and civic participation. Other city and partner organizations' plans also speak to the importance of arts and culture initiatives in our community. Since the process of working on the master plan has started, collaboration has created some real results. The partners of the Oceanside Public Library and the Arts Commission, the Oceanside Museum of Art, Main Street Oceanside, and Visit Oceanside created a successful bid for one of the state's first 14 cultural district designations in our downtown area. Other collaborative efforts have brought great programming and grants to Oceanside. The Oceanside Public Library was created in 1904, and it is served as the cultural heart of the City of Oceanside. It also works as a community connector, increasing the quality of life of the residents of Oceanside. The library is ready to take the lead on implementing this plan. So following adoption of the plan, the work will continue. The Arts Commission is very committed to showing the value of arts in Oceanside. Using the Arts Commission's current funds, an economic impact study will be done with the Americans for the Arts to delineate the impact of the arts on our city. A work plan will be created to tackle the planned priorities, which include an update of the current arts and public places policy. Some of the plan's objectives can be accomplished with existing resources. However, some elements will require additional funding to implement, and the Library Department will make every effort to seek grant funding to fit these projects. Other projects may be brought forward through the annual budget process for council consideration, depending on the city's capacity to fund them. The Arts Commission unanimously approved the master plan for the arts on June 4, 2018, and staff is recommending that the city, or council, approve the draft master plan for the arts to be implemented by the Library Department overseeing your arts commission. Thank you, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there any public?
Yes. The first speaker is Amber Newman, followed by Maria Mingalone.
Switch my glasses here. I'm blind as a bat without them. Okay, here we are. Hello, my name is Amber Newman. Speaking on behalf of the arts here, arts and culture has been proven to benefit communities. They encourage public dialogue and contribute to a community's creative growth. They provide an avenue to explore the kind of out-of-the-box ideas that retain our past while building towards our future. They expand our community capacity for unity, and they attract visitors and artists to our city. Art is a universal language that everyone understands. It is a diverse conversation that connects us across cultures, space, and time. Art compels wonder. It fosters creativity and inspires innovation, and even teaches empathy. It can also provide community-positive outlets for those who may otherwise find more mischievous ways of spending their time. In short, art brings us all together. It is vital that the City of Oceanside approve and implement the O-Arts Master Plan for the Arts. As an executive board member of the Oceanside Cultural Arts Foundation, as well as a member and regular event sponsor of the Oceanside Museum of Art, I am passionate about arts for our community. Approving this plan will benefit all walks of life in Oceanside, locals and visitors alike. I urge you to please vote yes on this proposal.
Hello, good evening, honorary mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. My name's Maria Mingalone. I'm the vice chair of the Arts Commission. I'm on the steering committee for the Oceanside California Cultural District. I'm on the leadership table for Oceanside Promise. I sit on the North County Arts Network, and also I'm on the Board of Directors of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. So I do have a little bias towards the arts. I'm the executive director of the Oceanside Museum of Art, and I do know that our Board of Directors sent a letter of support that I believe you received. But I'm actually here today just as a resident. I live only a few blocks away from here, and I just know as someone who lives in this city that I really want to have a quality of life, that people want to live in a city that is vibrant, lively, cultural, and culturally active. I think there are many avenues for developing a healthy city, none of which include, all of which include, I should say, public safety, healthy infrastructure, viable housing and jobs, healthy and meaningful activities. We want to have good places to go to eat. We want to have great places to gather, and I think arts and culture help provide those avenues. They're really socially important ways for people to come together, to share their similarities, to share their differences. It's a really great and positive way for people to connect and a valuable way to have a mix of activities in a lively downtown. I do urge you to support the master plan and really appreciate all the work of the fellow commissioners and David Sanders in putting it together, and Sherry and the library's support. Thank you very much.
And the last speaker is Teri Zimdorff.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Just a little background about me. I'm a native San Diegan, grew up about 20 miles south. I always thought that all the culture there was in San Diego was in Balboa Park. For the last 37 years, I've lived in Encinitas, in Leavenheim. About six years ago, I saw a little blurb in the newspaper on Oceanside Museum of Art. So I investigated, came up here, and was immediately impressed with the vitality, energy, and community orientation of the museum. I started volunteering in the Education Department, led the docents to be developed, and now I'm a board member. I moved here in October, such as my commitment and my attraction to your community.
Welcome.
And I also want to state that the attraction is reflected in the docent group. We have 15 docents in the Education Department. Five of those come here from Encinitas. Two come from Orange County. So this is having a far-reaching effect. We can further our cultural enhancement, but we can't do it by accident. We need intent and a strategy, and I believe this is it. So as a citizen and president of the Board of Trustees of the Oceanside Museum of Art, I urge you to support O-Aarts. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Oh, I'm just happy to be able to support this, so move approval. I am so proud of where we've been and now how much we've been able to accomplish in the last 20 years. I feel really honored to have been able to be part of the million-dollar grant that finished the expansion of the museum of art. I personally am involved with Noche Mexicana. It was really nice to see those photos. We're going to have our 14th annual, and it is a labor of love for our entire community and really happy to be able to bring that to Oceanside and to be able to show that we now partner with Wells Fargo and NBC Univision here in Oceanside. So a city is made rich by its diversity, for me, the diversity and its cultural institutions, and I am so proud of our Oceanside Public Library and our Oceanside Museum of Art, as well as all the other organizations that we have. And every single effort, it continues. Sometimes it's very difficult, you know, artists really care about their expressions, and, you know, they're not rich, but they're rich in what they produce, be it song, dance, the visual arts. It's so wonderful. So I move approval, and I look forward to seeing much, much more. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. Pardon me. I'll second that. I had the opportunity to visit with CJ and Sherry. I've been impressed since, you know, Brad was the liaison, and Brad was, he was a special addition for putting this arts commission together. But CJ and her efforts through being recommended by Sherry to take this over has dived in and made a big wave, I think, for the future. I had a meeting with them, and it was before I actually got a chance to read the list of the strategies, and so I have a couple of suggestions that, since you, this is a draft, and I'm just going to throw a couple of things out. Please, no colored crosswalks. Couple of questions about current art in public places and the 1% capital improvement project budgets. So looking at that 1% from the public, I assume that's part of this, but have we decided to do the 1% or the 2%? We haven't made that decision yet.
Councilmember Feller, honorable mayor, and council members. That's a great question. We were very careful in the way that we put this plan together, including the way that we worded some of those things that involve funding, specifically when they have to do with the CIP. If you notice, everything is council can direct us to investigate, so we have left it to take direction from you on what you would want us to do with those things. The idea here is to get a plan passed, to get a vision put in place, and then the things that we are able to accomplish, we start accomplishing the things that need funding. We start looking for ways to do funding, but you're not obligated in any way to dollars right now, and we've left it to take direction from you on how you would want us to proceed.
So that leads to 1% of current CIP is $400,000, and that's what you had written in the back.
That's what we wrote to give you an example of if you were to direct us to look at that, that there's some possible funding there and what the amount would be.
Okay, but do we need to add money to our budget if those CIP projects are, if you have those projects in the CIP and it takes 1%, where does that $400,000 come from? Does something miss out in the CIP?
Did you want to answer that? Yes.
Good evening, councilmen. A quick answer is that if you do decide to allocate 1% of your CIP, it would depend on the circumstances of the project, whether it would be a kind of extra expense or whether it could be built in. For example, you may be familiar with public art that's included in a terrazzo floor. You might see that in a train station or in an airport. In that case, the cost of the floor really isn't increased that much by adding a terrazzo design, an artistic element to it. In other cases, you might need the full 1% and maybe some additional grant funds to be able to accomplish the artistic purpose of the project. So the answer is, I think, it depends.
Okay. I'm going to look up what terrazzo is later, but not really sure.
This means tile. It just means a tile floor.
Okay. Tile floor. So murals, I would like us to set very high standards on murals. It says here in 2.3.2, a bunch of points. Explore development of the junior sale pier amphitheater into a cultural venue. You know, the possible operation, part, future naming rights, something that those kinds of things could be done sooner rather than later if those people were inclined to improve the band shell. I think that would be important. The other question was the mini-grant program, subject to council approval again, but those kinds of things, you've already got artspace.org doing some things. Would they be somebody that can do the mini-grant programs, or is that something that staff wants to do?
You remember several years ago when the Arts Commission was given their annual $25,000 in funding? They reached out to different nonprofits within the city that provided arts programming for children and then brought to you a list of recommendations and made small $5,000 grants to the different groups so that they could put on some kind of a special arts programming for children. So there's the opportunity to reinstate that. There's the opportunity to redefine it, to bring in other groups, as you mentioned, the arts.org. So it's open to whatever direction we want to take it, and we would be bringing those recommendations to the council for your approval.
Okay, very good. And then the last thing is 3.2.2, long-term higher-cost actions. Grants should require matching funds to provide greater leverage of public dollars, and we do that a lot with some of our other capital-type improvements. So I think you've definitely come up with a great plan, and I know that the staff has worked hard, the Arts Commission worked hard, the group that oversaw this cultural plan did a great job, and I just, I hope, I think, I did have one other note. Research and consider a potential future private development fee. Take that one slow, maybe look at how they want to fit it into their budget. So, and did I already second that? Do I have more? Do I have more time left? Oh, well, let me talk some more. Never mind.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
How many on 16? How many? Well, let's go to item 17. We'll do the mayor and council items up until we can till 6 o'clock. 17 is a request to make appointments and recommendations to the newly created Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee. You have a list of the recommended candidates for that committee in your backup material and I would move approval of that recommendation.
Second.
And we have one speaker, Cindy Rocco.
Honorable Mayor, Council. I wanted, I was reading over the list of recommendations and I know that I submitted my application and I submitted for the finance and the accounting, but that's not what I am here to say. I just noticed that there wasn't any alternatives positions listed, so I wanted to see based on the information that you had on my education and my work experience in investing and finance and accounting and reading financial reports and auditing, that you would consider me as an alternative. I know that there was a lot of candidates, but I'd like, I would be excited to be a part of something bigger than myself and something for the city because, you know, I just love this city. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
I, I don't believe there were any alternate positions in the language, but if, if a vacancy occurs at some point, then other applicants can apply again for that vacancy. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And I recognize, and for the public's information, there are actually, out of the seven slots, four of them are pretty much decided by certain organizations. For example, the chamber has a, has a representative, the San Diego Taxpayers Association has a representative, the police officers have a representative and the firefighters have a representative. So really we have three that we could actually appoint, you know, outside of that. I mean, yes, we still have to confirm those people and we're doing that tonight. But I just wanted to point out that, and then two of them are qualified professionals and one is a community at-large representative. So that, that makes the seven. I just wanted to point out that the recommendation is, only has one woman out of seven. And would just like to get more women on our boards and commissions and especially this one. So we do have Colleen O'Hara who is being recommended, but then we do have another male being recommended for the qualified and, and that happens to be former councilmember Kern. For at-large, we do have finally some diversity. Hi, Rob. Thank you so much for applying. Really appreciate that. And, you know, I just want to go on record as saying that I think we should have worked harder on getting more represent, better representation on this in terms of, you know, you know, male, female and some more diversity. Because we just talked about our, how, how diverse our community is and the cultural, you know, the cultural district and all that. And we have a lot of leaders within our community. That's another thing that I'm very, very proud of. And so I would be recommending, would have recommended Cindy Rocco. Cindy, I think that, I was very impressed by your background in finance. Where are you? I don't know where you went, but there you are. So I would have recommended Cindy to make a better balance. But that's, those are my comments.
Councilmember Keim.
I just wanted to thank everyone who did apply. Looking at the applications, there were some incredible resumes with a wide range of experience and I, I think the city is extremely lucky to have a pool of applicants that's that talented and interested. So I'm, I'm confident that we are starting the Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee on the right foot with that level of experience.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
So if my vote could reflect yes on all except for the position, that would be Mr. Kern. In favor of Cindy Rocco, a woman. Thank you.
Can, can you please vote? Motion passes 5-0, except the finale.
Thank you.
Item 18, Councilmember Rodriguez, if you'd like to.
Yes, so I approached the mayor on bringing this item forward. I think it will assist in relieving pressure, especially from, from the state and the county levels on the housing demands. We've already implemented accessory dwelling unit changes as of, I believe, last year. However, I think we can do more to encourage more infill through accessory dwelling units by enhancing our program, packaging it up in a way that's incentivized, better timelines, maybe even the potential of lesser fees. And I would like to have staff move forward on creating a program that has expedited 30-day or less timelines for non-coastal zone applicants and 60 days for coastal zone applicants. Reduce fees to be considered and encouraged, to encourage applications. Staff to prepare and provide ADU marketing materials. I think the marketing element and how we package this to make it easy, to make it checklist orientated for individuals who maybe do not have experience in construction and can look at something and go, wow, I can do that. And we can get some more granny flats built here in Oceanside, which would include obviously drawings, layouts, step-by-step, Q and A and even the potential of some videos and the marketing campaign of a, you know, pretty much an enhanced ADU program. So I would really like to move forward on a program like this and I think we can add a lot of, of units to accommodate the lower-income housing demands that we need here in Oceanside.
And we have one speaker, Joan Bachmann.
Joan Bachmann. Thank you. Joan Bachmann, our local resident. I've spoken on this before and I think we're doing the least common denominator sort of solution with ADUs. I know it's a state law, I know all of that, but we have a better solution out there. And you know what it is. We have the nodes and avenues concept of concentrating commercial. So we can get rid of all those strip mall failed commercial and put housing there. I really encourage you to look around at cities that are thriving and they do not have continuous commercial down every single one of their major streets. I talked to Councilmember Rodriguez one time, mentioned El Cajon Boulevard and what a mess that street is down in San Diego. What a difference it would make to break that up with landscaped, landscaped areas and housing and concentrate those commercial areas. Because that long strip mall isn't doing anybody any favors. Neither is Oceanside Boulevard, neither is parts of Mission. And you'll notice as they spread just all up and down Coast Highway again, we will start to see failures. So we need to take, take to heart the nodes concept because we've got all kinds of land on all our major streets, which puts it right there with transit, everything you want for that kind of housing. It puts, you can build things with amenities rather than a Home Depot shed in everybody's backyard. You can have something with amenities and services for people. So we have a great start on Mission Avenue. That's what we need to be looking at. There's multiple places for that on Oceanside Boulevard, on other parts of Mission, on Douglas, everywhere. And we need to divide this city up and start to take that seriously. And what is going to happen to our historic neighborhoods is that they will be the first to densify. This book has already been written. This happens every time. You take a beautiful historic neighborhood, it starts to go downhill. They all sound like a great idea now, like craft breweries are all wonderful, but it, when things turn into bars and when it turns into just slum lords, it's a problem. So we need to be thinking more intelligently about this and I encourage you to take that seriously and move forward with the new concept. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. This is actually state law and we adopted state law. So the accessory dwelling unit, our current law basically reflects that, reflects that. As to reduce costs, I know that we have a cost recovery, basically net neutral. We have stat, especially building and planning, whatever the time they spend is how much, you know, we charge. We, we're not making a profit off of that. So I would like to see what staff thinks about, you know, preparing and providing marketing material to include drawings and layouts, that kind of stuff. Right now, there's a lot of building going on in, in Oceanside and I don't know if they have the time to be doing this, but I would like to see, I think it's, is it Encinitas that's doing some, you know, kind of ready plans, right? You present them and I don't know who actually came up with them, but it would be great. I don't know, I mean, bottom line is, we have to make sure that it's to code and those are the costs, right, that, that, that people really incur is, is making sure that it's to code. So I, I would just like to see that staff, you know, what, what can we do? You know, what, what kind of timing do we have? Is it, is 30 days realistic? Because if it's not realistic, we're going, I don't want to have to come back and say, you know, a little longer. So maybe 45 days or how long would it take?
In fact, good, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, the 30 days should be fine so long as the applicants are getting their materials back to us on a timely basis. The 60 days in the coastal zone is a little more challenging if the ADU is associated with another project that requires a coastal permit.
Right, it could take six months to a year.
It could take a lot longer, but we'll certainly put a program together and share it with the council.
Okay. And I think that's what you're, I believe that's what the idea was here to be a little more creative, see what our departments can come up with, how much money it's going to cost us in terms of, you know, staff time and figuring out, you know, once it's done, how much to charge. Once it's done, I think we can spread it out, figure out how long it'll take to, to have that cost recovery. But, yeah, I, I'm really hoping, you know, when, when we, when this came forward, of course, the policy behind it from the state was, well, okay, we need more housing, so let's make it easier. It, it doesn't have to be attached. It doesn't have to be on just one floor. It could be, you know, up on this, on a second floor. So there are a lot of things that the state allows for and which we, we needed to adopt. And so to discuss timing and to discuss, you know, what kind of materials we can come up with, like maybe like what Encinitas did, maybe we can even borrow some of their marketing stuff or plans would be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
Thank you. That might be what Joan was referring to was the sheds, the Home Depot sheds that appeared in the newspaper, the project in Encinitas. So I, I just want to make sure that, that we're covering our costs and, and doing things much quicker is, is something I like to see happen. I don't know how successful ADUs are going to be. You know, I would, I would not do that unless I had, well, I couldn't do it for any of my families. But I think if, if I'd had a place besides the house for my mother-in-law, I, I think we would have probably done something like this, but I don't know if, if, if that's what it took to keep her with us. I, I don't know how successful this will be. Most of our lots are fairly small. So, but I support this going forward, just make sure we're covering our costs.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I think we're all on the same page. I'm looking at this from the perspective of a big picture. We have a lot of pressure to build housing and to build low-income housing. And when you, when, when I sat there and I analyzed the city of Oceanside and lot size and, you know, taking out HOAs, taking out areas where there's, you know, there's not the, the usage is, is not going to be appropriate on the sewers and, and those impacts, you know, in my own personal estimation, and staff can get back, you know, I'm, I'm looking at 300 to 400 in the next three to four years granny flats. But the problem is, is we have to package this up in a way that makes it easier for owners to consider. It will not only add value to their land, it will also create additional income for our residents and it will also meet housing demands based on the regional housing needs assessment. So we're really killing a lot of birds with one stone in improving the packaging of a program like this. So I'm really excited. I, I have faith that it will be a very successful program and I'm excited to see what staff comes back with. So I would like to move for approval on item number 18.
I think staff has direction. I, I'm not really sure we need a motion because some of this stuff is not going to, you know, we're not going to be able to do like reduce the cost. It's going to have to be based on...
They're, they're going to come back with that report for us to do, but I'm wanting to move forward on a motion for giving them instruction to do that.
I'll second that. Please vote.
Okay. So it's not everything. Okay.
Motion passes 5-0.
We'll go to item 19, which is a request by myself and the deputy mayor in regards to allocating funds from Measure X to several projects, which include the beachfront restrooms and improvements, the El Corazon Community Room and Aquatic Center and the Fire Station One. Before Measure, Measure X passed and then after, as I was talking to community groups, in fact, apparently there's a video flying around of one of them, my commitment was that should it pass, that we would deliver to the community several projects that were deemed to be high priority projects that were lacking funding. And those included the ones I just mentioned. It seems premature since we just appointed the Measure X Oversight Committee, but I did that on purpose, to eliminate that committee from having to decide particularly which priority projects were a higher priority. Because in my estimation, the El Corazon project and the beachfront restrooms are the two highest priority projects we have, particularly since we broke ground this morning on the hotel project. The last thing we need when that project opens its doors are the restrooms that are down by that amphitheater. I don't know if you use them, but I no longer do. So anyway, the, the issue here before us is I would like to allocate funding and that funding would be a loan agreement from the city's portfolio that would be paid back with the future revenues. It's slightly, it's less than even half of the total revenues over the next seven years to pay for and advance those projects. Public?
Yep. The first speaker is Tony Davis, followed by Midori Sumovich.
Thank you. I'm a 20-year resident of Oceanside. I support the Aquatic Center. I've been pursuing this for about five years for the two new councilmembers. The others know me probably by heart by now. I, I exist in a community that's aquatic swimmers and sports around aquatics and lifeguarding and the beach and surfers. This is the community I'm in. These are the people that I represent and this group would like to see this Aquatic Center get done. We've been working on it for a long time. This group represents people, like I said, that become lifeguards. Some of them were in the original junior lifeguard program. Some of those kids end up swimming in high school at El Camino. Sometimes they swim at Oceanside. Sometimes they play water polo at El Camino and this is boys and girls, pretty rough sport, but we got some tough ones out there. Oceanside also has water polo, boys and girls. Then you've got the surfers, anyone that needs to know how to swim and learn how to swim. So the current pool that we have is Brook Street and it's probably a surprise to a lot of you guys that this was built in the 1950s. So that makes it a really old pool. I don't believe we have any parks that have place structures that are that old. I don't believe we had a lot of things that are that old. So this Aquatic Center is... So, this Aquatic Center is way overdue, I think it's gonna help bring together a bigger community, that will become a bigger part of Oceanside. I think it's important, as Oceanside grows, to have an Aquatic Center. I think El Corazon, being the spot, the heart of the city, this will be a great place to put it. We already have the location, I believe you're about a half million dollars in already, working on getting it set up, so I think this is a great way to get it moving, and I support it, and I know there's a lot of other people out there that do too, so, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Midori Simovich, thank you very much for listening to me. I, Tony and I were one of the ones that asked for decent swimming pool first, and then it became to the point that the city promised us to build the Aquatic Center. And then, just be mentioned that the project that provide, you are providing, or our money is providing for ourselves, is, need to be also a little bit more productive. For the things that you are talking about, the priority, we don't have Aquatic Center. This city has grown so much. When I came to this table, to, in front of you, I was rather newer citizen, now I am been here many years now, and my son was just a high school, first freshman, now he is working. So, I'd like to see, now, at this rate, our son may be using the swimming pool, if it build, for his grandchildren, that is not right. So, please, make it a priority, it will bring you, bring us, this city, some money by creating it. You are losing lots of money out to the outside of this city, because lots of swimmers, water polo tournaments, swimming meets, and all kinds of stuff can happen in the new Aquatic Center, and the city will profit from that activity. And everybody needs to learn to swim when being on Oceanside, you know, along the resident of Oceanside. So, I beg you to move forward, move, giving the funds to the Aquatic Center, thank you.
The next speaker is Jimmy Naught, followed by Diane Nygaard.
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Naught, one twenty-seven, Cherry Lane. I have an issue on this, first off. There had been a series of public surveys on Measure X. The city manager has possession of those surveys. I did not hear a report to the public on this item, when this item was brought up by the mayor. The, from what I understand, thieves were ranked less than what the public wanted. The public wanted, from what I understood, roadways, number one, for repairs, and making sure that they were properly addressed, and making sure that the safety, public safety was involved. The second thing that was presented as well, from what I understood, was making sure the city was clean and presentable, at least that's from what I heard. I don't know how true these are, but that's some of the words that was used out in the community to promote Measure X. And then, there was also from the police and fire unions as well, different things were told to the public. I think what the public needs to know is the direct facts. What did those surveys say, and what wore those rankings, and at what rankings did these items come up? Then, we need to take and pass these to the newly assigned committee, get their opinion, and they can come back to the city council and present it in a public forum. And that way, they can render their decision and say, this is what should be done, and then you can take their advice, or not, and then you take the ramifications from that. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Diane Nygaard, and I'm here tonight representing Friends of El Corazon, and we are thrilled to see funding for the Swim Center included here tonight. This center has been a twenty-year promise to this community, and it's a key part of the El Corazon Plan. Three times previously, the city council considered funds for construction of the Swim Center, and kicked the can down the road. Tonight, we ask you to stop kicking the can and approve funding. Development in El Corazon is already under construction, and more is planned. The public amenities that were supposed to be part of this park need to also be moving forward. Delays now will only cost us more money, as work is already underway, and we don't want that hole filled up with water, that's without a bottom to the pool. Anyhow, the pub, the, you've got time to juggle the funds around, so funds you advance tonight could be reimbursed from multiple sources, including the sales tax, park impact fees that are in the process of being adjusted, civic center bonds, private donations. The additional funds our community has with the sales tax gives you greater flexibility to use them wisely, and to meet the priority needs of this community. So, move forward tonight on the critically needed Swim Center, that activity there, the swim meets that can be held on that site, will really help give an economic boost to the hotel and the other commercial development. Those two will feed each other, we need both moving together. Swim Center will help fulfill that promise made almost ten years ago for El Corazon, a park in the heart of Oceanside. Please vote yes for our kids, our community, our future. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Smith, followed by Arlene Hammer Schmidt.
My name's Matt Smith, I've been a resident here for almost twenty years. I have four kids going to El Camino and Ivy Ranch Elementary. The pool that they're using right now, as you well know, is below standard, it's almost a half-century old, and to tell you the truth, it's not very good to use. Often, my kids have to travel to Carlsbad to use the appropriate length pools, to be able to get the correct times, because our pools don't have the correct times to use for, for, for high school. On the topic of the new swimming pool, according to well-known African-American swimmer, now a famous ESPN personality, Saber Mohammed, he gave his opinion about the importance of modern swimming pools. He said, "No one dies from not being able to play basketball." In other words, swimming is not just an exercise, it's a life-saving skill. Having therapeutic or ADA modern-designed pools help people in the community who have special needs. I was here just a few months ago, just as many in this room were, and we witnessed a promise from you, and you guys promised that in this meeting, after we pass the measure, and we vote and approve it, we'll get our pool. Well, great news, we passed it, we're paying for it, it's time for the pool. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Arlene Hammer Schmidt, Ivy Road in Fire Mountain. First of all, I was looking for the additional materials that were mentioned, I didn't see any additional materials supplied, so therefore, the public is relatively uninformed about this. I am opposed to this concept, idea, because it basically jumps over the Citizens Oversight Committee, which is what we were promised, speaking of a promise, we had the promise of Citizens Oversight on these expenditures. Therefore, it is premature, as the mayor mentioned. The city has, cities have responsibility to be and uphold integrity, in other words, doing what we say we will. What the city said would happen is, this is contrary to what the city's description was on our ballot. On our ballot, there was no mention of this project, there was however, mentioned Citizens Oversight, and I don't, I'm not gonna spend the time on all that language. I coached boys swimming and diving at Oceanside High School in the late seventies with Nelson Elmore, we coached against Bill Porter, and I fought with Bill Porter to try to get a pool on the El Camino campus, or anywhere else. I am a member of the group that supports the Aquatic Center, but not like this. This is just wrong, to do one thing which is opposite from what you said you would do, and the personal promises between council and citizens group, or council and the swimming group, to get this passed, and then we'll see if we can get us a pool, I'm sorry, that is completely overridden by the language of the bank, of, on the ballot. Do not be a party to this attempted bait and switch. It's a con on our voters. No on this, and yes on integrity. I would vote for a ballot to tax me some extra money to pay for that Aquatic Center. Just be straight up forward with this. This is not straightforward, this is duplicitous, it is, I don't like it, you can tell I don't like it, we could do it better, let's just do what we said we would do on the ballot. That's what people voted for, that's what we were promised, do it right. Thank you.
And the last two speakers are Joanne Bachman and Scott Wagner.
Hello, Joanne Bachman, Alberta Street. I'm also a member of Friends of El Corazon, and hardly support the pool, but I'm here more as a parent. I grew up as a swimmer, I have asthma, and I could never run. I was not into ball sports, my oldest son, who is now a sailing instructor, was not into ball sports. My other two did very well with ball sports. So, you need something besides ball sports for kids, and it is a matter of life and death. For kids with asthma who can't run necessarily, swimming is an incredibly wonderful activity for that, and keeps you physically fit. We have a population here that is not known for being, knowing how to swim, and they are at risk. So, this is not a luxury, it is a necessity for those kids. It also, as mentioned, we have been planning El Corazon for a very long time, the pool has always been part of that. The specific plan was approved in two thousand nine, and we do need to get this pool going. The land is there, we're ready for it, we just need to construct it, and it is more than just a pool, it's a necessity. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council, Scott Wagner, Fire Mountain, lifelong community member, very active in the community, both as down at the beach with the lifeguards, with the schools as a teacher, as a swim coach, as a father with three kids that have grown up and still live in the area. I've seen the value of the pool, not only for, for young kids, but I've seen it for the entire community. You know, you have a lot of people coming and representing the young facet of the community, a lot of great points have already been made, but let's not forget, it's already, it was made right next, it's supposed to be right next to the senior center, it's not far from the, from the Veterans Center, it's in a place in Oceanside that is perfect. We have two pools, obviously, as you've heard, they're outdated, and they're on the western portion of the city. We have that whole entire Ranch Devil area that's pretty much vacant, this would be a huge asset to the city. There was concern, obviously, about the, about the funding, this has been a long time coming, we were told that there was concern about the ongoing cost, and that Measure X would help with that, and it passed. All the ducks are lined up, the council made its, made its promise, last time we met, you made a promise that we were gonna get this passed. I know councilmember Kime and councilmember Rodriguez, you're new, hopefully you've had time to research it, look at both the, the value and the asset to the city, not so much as financially, but as a value that goes beyond money, sort of the value that the senior center has brought, the value that the Mancebe Cannon has brought, these are all things that give a sense of community, that's what keeps people in this community, as opposed to having to go to Carlsbad and other areas to have these types of facilities. Oceanside is a large city, it's a hundred and sixty thousand plus, our city is doing extremely well, we just passed Measure X, we've gone through all those steps, we've dotted the i's, we've crossed the t, let's do the right thing, let's get this thing continuing to move forward. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for all of your comments. First off, I would like to say that, you know, I think these, the projects that the mayor and deputy mayor Feller brought forth, I think they're great projects, the Aquatic Center, the bathrooms, El Corazon, these are great projects, that I think that I could at some point get behind and move forward, absolutely. But it's imperative, in my opinion, that we actually begin receiving this additional sales tax. At this juncture, all we have is estimations, I wanna see funds start coming in, and see those numbers start coming in. These funds belong to Oceanside, they belong to the residents, and we just today established an oversight committee with the responsibility to meet and get resident feedback, and report back to council, and to keep track of that, and so that's their function, they need, they have a defined role, they have a function to deliberate and get resident feedback. And so, I, again, I think these are great projects, but I think this is a little bit premature to be giving staff direction before we have funds coming in, one, and two, before our oversight committee, the watchdogs for this sales tax, have an opportunity to deliberate and gain feedback, and in the end, I think we're gonna end up close to the same spot, but we need to, we need to do this the right way. And so, I will not be supporting moving forward on, on these funds and allocations tonight.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. I will admit that I was really surprised to see this coming forward. I was a strong supporter of Measure X, as was our mayor. I believe councilmember Feller pers, voted to put it on the ballot, but personally said he was against it. I think Christopher also said he was against it, I think he campaigned against it, I'm not sure how you, where you were on this. But, there was a lot of discussion about X, there was a survey that was done, and the wording for Measure X was based on the survey, and what the community would be willing to support by a vote of over fifty percent, I think it ended up, I forget what it was, but we were looking at maybe over sixty percent, the survey said, and, huh? Sixty-four percent was the survey. And what came out loud and clear is public safety, infrastructure, fixing roads, homelessness, addressing homelessness, and I think there were some other things there, but public safety was a very, very important reason. So, it's here on the, on the, on the agenda, and I know at least two councilmembers are supporting this. For me... For me, Fire Station One should have been built a long time ago. And I think that the community knew very well that Fire Station One was on the top. We're talking about public safety to the nth degree. We are not prepared for a fire in a mid-rise building or even in a, in a parking lot, underground parking lot. We are so behind in terms of having a real Fire Station One that absolutely, I think that's something, even though I would prefer to have had a quick kind of like workshop to make sure that we were all on the same page on this or, you know, more or less consensus. I am assured that we are going to have a workshop as part of the budget process, so the, so the, so the budget workshop will include our opportunity and the public's opportunity to weigh in on the $77 million. It is a finite amount of money. And I actually don't know what it actually is going to end up being, right? Because I don't know, you know, if we start bonding against it, you know, money that we get, it's probably going to be less, right? So I asked staff how much the booth, beach improvements are, and the beach improvements are at $8 million. And for Fire Station One, about $8 million. That's $16 million, possibly up to, up to 20. And then, and, and those two, that was the other thing. I, when I went around asking people to please support X because, you know, of our very real needs, the bathrooms, as, as Peter has indicated, are absolutely necessary. We've got crumbling concrete. We need a better walkway. There are so many things that we, that, that we could end up paying libel for, and it's a, it's, it is a, a public works project that was created in the 30s? 30s. It's, it's a ve, it's iconic to Oceanside. This is definitely something that we need. So I actually would like to bifurcate Fire Station One and the beach bathrooms as something we absolutely, they're a high priority. They've been a high priority. Anybody listening to or discussing what our needs are, definitely that. Fire Station Eight, there, there are a whole lot of lists that I'm, I'm happy that we're going to be able to get to. What I would, as to the swimming pool that I support 1,000%, the last direction that I recall is that this was going to come back this past fall with direction that it be paid through extending the bonds for the civic center. And that is definitely something that I support. I know that, that the swimming pool was not listed for Measure X, and therefore, I would like to vote to make it happen with extending the bonds. So with your permission, was there a motion made? Okay. With your per, there was no motion? Okay. With, with, I would like to make a motion that we move forward on the beach bathrooms and Fire Station One, and that with respect to the swimming pool, I'd like to make a separate motion. So that would be my first.
We still have laundry list of speakers. Councilmember Kime?
Okay.
I want to hear from everybody first, and then we'll come back to your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the more difficult items that's come up. I'm, I'm a lifelong swimmer and water pole player and also a lifeguard. I taught swim lessons at Marshall Street and Brook Street. So I absolutely understand the significance of having a quality aquatic center in the city and the good it can do for our children. I will be one of the first people to use it if it opens. But I'm also concerned about borrowing against the number, that we don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, and so that, that is concerning to me. I, I think the pool is a, a want right now, and it's on the top of my list. With the beach bathrooms and fire stations are needs, and I think those need to be addressed. But I think we need to move a little more slowly when it comes to the pool.
Thank you. Is, is it possible we could move these projects forward in another form? I mean, I, I support what we're doing here, but in order to get everybody on board, move it to a, because we talked about the, the bonding for the, the, we're almost paid off here in the civic center. So I don't know if we can get, get to that from this point here. I would be willing to indulge the city manager.
Is that your second? Is that a second to the motion?
I'll second your motion. I guess the question would be, is the $2 million from the civic center debt still available?
We can do that, right.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, so the bonds on the building, which cost about $2 million a year, are paid off this November. That $2 million has already been folded into the current five-year forecast, but that doesn't mean that that can't be changed. To fund the pool, it's essentially, it's, it's easy. It's either Measure X, bonding, or a combination thereof. It's, it's pretty simple. Those are our choices. We could probably take $1 million of that $2 million and bond for 30 years and pay for the pool, if that's the desire of the council.
It is.
So I would, I, I would support that. I, I don't know how you bifurcate it because if you're not willing to do the pool in this, you shouldn't be willing to do Fire Station One. And, and I, and I support Fire Station One. I, I supported it when it came forward to us about 2005 or '06.
Right.
But we've, we've lollygagged with that quite a bit in the beach restrooms as well. So I, I mean, I don't know how you can be for one or the other, but...
One is X, and the other one is extending the bonds on the civic center.
So, talking about extending the bonds needs to be an agenda item, and it needs to be posted for us even...
It's just direction to staff. They'll come back.
Oh, so to prepare numbers? So we're not, we're not actually making a vote on a decision, is what you're saying?
We, we'd be direction to staff. It actually was supposed to come back already last fall. So, yes, we can do that today. Direction to staff.
Yeah, you have the authority to generally give direction with respect to the funding for these three projects, but of course, we're going to have to come back and prepare implementing documents for all of these projects. So to the extent, I think the current motion is, if I understand it correctly, is to basically do a loan from the portfolio to fund Fire Station Seven and the bathrooms.
When?
You know, that's what I meant. You don't have enough money to probably do Fire Station Seven again, but Fire Station One and the bathrooms to be repaid by Measure X proceeds.
And then the second motion would be...
And then the second component would be to basically develop a financing plan for the pool, anticipating the issuance of bonds. But of course, you're not issuing bonds. You're not prepared to do that now. And there are going to have to be probably ordinance changes in our city code that we're going to need to bring forward in order to implement that.
Right.
What would be, what would be the harm in waiting for our oversight committee to meet and get public feedback before moving on these great projects? I don't understand the rush in moving forward on a motion tonight when we've just established an oversight committee. We should give them the opportunity, and we should receive some funds back from the state before moving forward. It just, it makes the most, most sense.
They'll still have an opportunity to look at it.
It's not our money to make decisions on. It's theirs.
It's not theirs either. It's the city's.
The city's.
It's the, it's the citizens of the, who vote, well, it's all of us now because it got voted in, so...
What's the point of the oversight committee if we're going to be making decisions before they have the opportunity to meet?
It's an advisory committee. It will go to them, and then it'll come to us. This is direction, direction to staff to bring it forward, to pers, to bring this back in, in the format that it needs to be, which is ordinance changes, you know, establishing these funds, that whole thing. And before that comes to the council, it'll go to them, and then it'll come to the council.
So we're not allocating Measure X money at this point? It's just giving staff direction to prepare a plan that we can vote on at a future date? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that would include a loan agreement, if it is a loan agreement?
Yes.
From the portfolio? That would all, definitely have to come back in front of you.
So I will second the motion to advance the funds on Measure X for the beach restrooms and Fire Station One. Please vote.
Okay.
We're going to come back, we're going to come back with the pool. I mean, there'll be a second, second motion on the pool.
Motion passes for one. Thank you. And then the second motion would be to direct staff to bring this back to council, the swimming pool back to fund with extension of the bonds. Is there a second? Please.
My only concern of coming back with, I mean, it's, the, the project is out to bid right now. My only concern is I want to make sure that when, when the bid's open and we come back, that there's adequate funds to pay to build the pool. And whether it's just bonds or it's a combination of bonds, development impact fees in Measure X, or any combination thereof, I'm fine with that. If it's just limited to the bonds, my concern is, as the city manager mentioned, those monies have already been rolled into the five-year forecast, which means if we take that, that money back out, it's going to impact the long-term forecast. So if it's any combination, as the city manager and staff feel would pay for it...
My intention is that the bonds will be paying for it, whether we borrow it through other forms, but that the bonds of the, extending the bonds will be the funding mechanism.
I just want to make sure if those funds are inadequate, that the, the staff has the ability to add Measure X money to that if they need to.
Which will start...
I have one thing I want to go over in reference to the pool. In sitting down with our finance director, right now, the Brook Street pool alone is costing close to $50,000 a month by itself. Brook Street and Marshall together are costing our city $748,000 a year. In my opinion, if we build the Aquatic Center, we need to close down one or the other. We have to save money. Brook Street's sinking into the ground. Let's, let's do something better for our city with that space. That's my opinion on that.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion passes 5-0.
We're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back with the public hearing item at that point.